I didn't have a chance to drive down, is this Westfield Central New Neighborhood? Is that just the, the one right down here by Smith's? By that school, by the new school? Yeah. Comaney Group site, I didn't drive, I usually try to drive through all trip, because I'm, I don't know where most of these things are. Is that the one, is that the Claire Anderson spot that's kind of down by the freeway? Yes, 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 yes. Okay, okay. So he'll be putting the road in, Comaney Group? Looks like a nice building, actually. Yeah, big. It looks like a good one, nice looking. Do Josh's job? Well, yeah, we probably want you to do it. We want to be able, we want to be able to understand it.
Well, I just been taking that much longer. By the time we get to the point of questions, maybe be here by then.
You don't have a city council representative on there, she has maybe, uh huh?
I think we'll give it till seven oh five and then get started at seven oh five and see where that puts us with Josh.
There's the mayor and a couple of city council members.
Uh huh. Also just Heather or Mandy, I guess.
There's Liz. Okay, we can get started now.
We're waiting.
We're starting.
We're waiting for Josh.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yep. We're starting at seven oh five. You've got a minute. I guess literally isn't it?
Mad Dash?
Mm-hmm. Sometimes that's just all you need, just that minute.
We always go up to, well, the last two years as a family, we go up to Eaton Huntsville. Have a condo up there and all of our three hosts and all, they come up. We spend the fourth up there. Go to the parade Huntsville and then over to the fireworks and Liberty. We don't fight the crowds. And it's kind of nice. It's, it's kind of peaceful and nice and so. We go up, we go up Friday and come back Tuesday. No, no, and hopefully beat the crowd. We've got a daughter that lives up in Mountain Green, if you know what that is. It's up Weaver Canyon, near Morgan, just.
How many, how many units? Yes, you did. How many units are going to be in that Westfield?
By Snow Basin, they live across the Snow Basin.
Okay.
Yeah, so. Anyway.
Yeah.
It's kind of nice to go up and enjoy.
Many doors, I guess.
Get away from the crowds.
It's a little cooler.
I'm not a real crowd person.
That's all right.
Neither is Brandon. Okay, it is after seven oh five, so I think we'll go ahead and get started and we'll see when is that Mr. Yost is able to join us.
Craig Jensen's here too, so.
So we can definitely start now.
All right, go ahead.
No. We were giving it a few minutes for Director Yost to be able to catch up. Yeah. All right, well, it is seven oh six, so we will call to order the June ninth twenty twenty-two meeting of the Springville Planning Commission. First item of business is an approval of the agenda. Do we have any motions for the agenda?
So moved, oh, yeah, I, I, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Or does the agenda, all of the agenda?
All the agenda, excuse me, yeah. I move, I move that we approve the agenda.
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And next would be the consent agenda. The items on the consent agenda are administrative actions where no additional discussion is needed. And if these are approved, then the recommendations in the staff report become the actions of the commission. So we will take any motions for objection or comment, we can pull things from the consent agenda if we need to.
I just have a question.
Okay.
So i- is this just some, um, they're taking existing commercial buildings and turn them, turn them into condominiums? Is that what it is? Okay. That's awesome. That's great, okay.
It's not condominiums like residential, but business use condominiums.
Okay, got it, okay. Is that what they call that then?
Mm-hmm.
Good to know, I'm still learning the terminology.
Yeah, because the first time you read it, you're like, wait, what? Are we putting those there?
I thought it was gentrification going on then, and I'm like, I can, I can live with that.
Right next to Condi. Are there any other questions or concerns with items on the consent agenda? Okay. Then if there are no objections or comments, then we can take a motion for the consent agenda.
Now I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
All right, we have a motion, is there a second?
No second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Consent agenda items pass. We do not have any administrative session items tonight, so we will move to our legislative session items, of which there are three, and each will have a public hearing. Our first agenda item for the legislative session is Lafferty Communities requesting amendment to the Westfield Central Neighborhood, New Neighborhood Plan to reduce the side setback and adopt standards for side yard reciprocal easements for the cottage lot type. And where Mr. Yost is not yet here, I think that falls to you. Shall we recess for a few minutes and? Okay. Okay. Yep.
You can present them if you want. Councilmember Jensen. You could present them if you'd like. Come give it a whirl, there's a PowerPoint on the computer.
Yeah, just. Do we have a motion to saunter or to recess or?
I'll make a motion for a short recess until Director Yost gets here.
Okay, do we have a second?
Seconded.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we will take a short recess while we allow some time for Director Yost to be able to make it here and had some conflicts tonight.
How you doing, buddy?
I don't know, counsel.
Somebody's running in. Looks like Director Yost.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, trying to get tucked in and set up, so.
Yeah, it's just like at school, it's a very short recess. We, we just took a recess, so if you're ready to go, then we'll start, but otherwise you can take a few minutes and just let us know when you're ready to go. And we'll call ourselves back.
Take a drink of water, deep breath.
Are we alive though?
Aye.
Should we move to council and recess now?
No, we have to motion and go back to the classroom.
Oh, okay.
Although the computer says this may take several minutes.
I logged in wrong.
Will we remain recessed for a moment?
We're still recessed.
Sorry for the delay.
That is live. Sounds like you're wearing several hats today.
I like your military haircut.
Thanks.
It's good for summertime.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's usually just a buzz, but we left a little length on top this time.
Was that because you saw Maverick?
No. Because I usually do it myself, but this time I actually went to somewhere and she's like, let's leave it a little longer in the front. Can always cut more off, right?
Yeah.
Actually join the National Guard.
Do we have a motion to reconvene?
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we are back in session and as soon as you're ready, Mr. Yost, we are ready to go.
All right, go ahead. Thank you. Oh, are you ready for my item?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Uh, I'll read it again. Lafferty Communities requests amendments to the Westfield Central New Neighborhood Plan to reduce the side setback and adopt standards for side yard reciprocal easements for the cottage lot type. For, uh, I thought I dropped a picture of our, uh, a reminder of what the Westfield Central New Neighborhood Plan is in here.
I think it's in our packet.
Oh, I just put it in the wrong place.
Yeah.
There we go, sorry. Uh, last year in September and then we adopted or recommended adoption to the city council, or the city council adopted this in, in September, the Westfield Central New Neighborhood Plan. This is the regulating plan from that, just for reference and memory, this is directly across the street from Meadow Brook Elementary School on nine fifty west and Seventh South. When we amended it in December, we made some changes to the regulating plan in terms of the blocks and the amount of development and units. Taking about twenty-four units out of this area and removing some streets and making this a larger continuous park. One thing that I noticed, noted in my planning commission, or actually I'm skipping items, this is the Lafferty Homes item, I'm sorry. So this is, this is the Westfield's New Neighborhood Plan. Lafferty Homes is proposing a reciprocal side yard easement configuration for the cottage lot type in this project. So this is something I tried to explain with a graphic here and we'll see if it makes any sense. So Lot A has an easement over and use of one side yard of the adjoining Lot B. And then Lot A in turn has an easement over its opposite side yard in favor of and for the use of Lot C. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
This is a site plan of two of those units showing the side yard here and then the side yard easement over here. So essentially your usable side yard goes from the, what we'd call the open side of your house to the closed side of the neighbor's house. In addition to this reciprocal easement arrangement, the Lafferty Communities is asking for a, or requesting a reduced side yard setback from a minimum of five to three feet, only where it's adjacent to an adjoining side yard of at least five feet and these reciprocal easements are in place. So it would lead to a functional or effective side yard of eight feet, but it would have the effect of bringing the houses closer together by two feet at a minimum.
So what's, what is the current?
Five.
Five total?
Five and five.
Ten.
For each side.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
It's ten feet.
Yeah, ten feet, now it's going to eight.
It would be eight between units.
Understood.
Uh, so each lot has one eight foot side yard for their exclusive use. And that would be three foot larger than if you had our minimum five foot side yard with a fence. So you'd have two five foot side yards and part of the argument that Lafferty Communities has made is that it creates a more usable side yard to essentially give all the two side yards to one person instead of splitting them in half.
Does it increase the number of units?
It does not change the plat. Also, windows on the adjoining house on the closed side of the house, the windows are high and small. So this side of the house would have sliding doors, large windows, the living area would face out onto this area. And they're also, or suggesting or offering in their design, which may or not, may or may not be compliant with the, uh, the rear wing width. We'll have to check that as we get farther down the road to increase, to narrow up the house in the middle by an additional two feet to give essentially ten feet of effective area there.
So go back to the, if you would, Josh, go back to the last slide.
Diagram?
Yeah, the diagram. So if we're looking at these two, let's, let's say the one on my left is plot A, like your example.
Yes.
The one on the right would be C. If we had an A over here, then plot Bs would be an eight foot setback on, or five foot setback on his back property.
Side property.
Side property.
Correct. Five and three, five and three, five and three. And then the ones on the end that have the, the end units or corner units have a wider side yard by necessity. So these would only be on the interiors.
Would they be, if, if they did this, would they, is there a, would there be an agreement that they couldn't put in a fence line in between the two?
So that would all be handled in the title and the codes, covenants and restrictions of the, of the subdivision. So there would be an easement recorded against the opposite, the adjoining lot in favor of the lot who's using it. And I'm sure, I'm not familiar with the, exactly how these instruments are structured, but it would specify the use and all those things so that this, so that the house did have full use of that. And that was, and that would be in their favor.
Josh, I guess I'm just not smart enough to understand why this is requested and why it's beneficial.
Uh, the reason they're requesting it is because, as I mentioned in the staff report, when these lots were platted, I don't know how much feedback there was between the person doing the plating and somebody who actually was going to build a house. So these lots are a minimum thirty feet wide. And with two five yard side yard, two five foot side yards, it leaves you with twenty feet maximum buildable space. That leaves you a, according to most builders, a substandard interior garage dimension for a two car garage, because they like to have at least twenty feet clear on the inside. And with twenty to the outside of the walls, you're far short of that. And it also narrows up for this plan for Lafferty, their bedrooms that sit over the, the rear of the home. It makes them functionally too narrow in their estimation to, you know, for a bed and a dresser.
So when you say it's far too narrow, it's three feet difference?
Right, it's, they're, they're saying, they're essentially saying two feet makes the difference between the minimum unit we feel is buildable and marketable and, uh, one that's not.
And that's primarily because of the garage and one bedroom?
The garage and the bedrooms in the back, correct. So their actual amendment, as they've noted here from the applicant, the side setback would be three foot minimum with a reciprocal easement for a total of eight feet. So staff's analysis is that, you know, we agree, or that the reciprocal easement results in a larger reusable side yard than the minimum five foot side yard. And that a wider effective side yard is a good thing, it's an attractive arrangement and I think it could be, it, it's not uncommon in other areas of the country and there's even some subdivisions in Utah that essentially use this arrangement. And the design of the homes is excellent, it's not every day you get a home builder coming in with a small number of lots, it's actually pulling in an architect to design custom floor plans. It's usually a home builder's internal design staff and they're trying to fit their standard plan onto the lot, especially for as few lots as they're currently taking down. So we really like the, the look of the homes, the design of the homes, the floor plans, they're bringing in some, the features of indoor and outdoor living, balconies, patios, lots of things that are very attractive. The elements that staff disagrees with is that the reciprocal easement should come at the expense of the five far, five foot minimum side yard setback. That's a lot of words for me. So it's a good, the reciprocal easement isn't, is, seems fine, but reducing the setback so that now we have houses closer, two feet closer together than we already had in a pretty compact project is where staff doesn't feel that it's something that necessarily keeps in with the, the spirit of the Westfield Central Neighborhood Plan and represents the type of incremental diversions that eventually may end up getting us a project, it's not quite what we want it to be. Uh, so our recommendation from a staff perspective is that we'd much rather just see taking a lot off of that side of the block. And interestingly, the plat actually hasn't been recorded. It would require, you know, a little additional review and some utility tweaks on the plan, but it would be very minimal to replat the lot faces where these lots exist to better suit the builder. So.
Hey Josh, how many total lots would be removed? Is it just one total lot?
It may be two, I, depending on the configuration, I know that on the nine fifty west side, so if I go back to the regulating plan, there are cottages along this frontage and this pocket court doesn't act, that's not a pocket court, that's a street, so there's some on this frontage and there may be some here, it's one or two lots.
So there could be one on each.
On each set. And I know there's some cottages up here, but I think it just may be two and I think there may be a little, I'm not sure how it would impact that, but it, it, it obviously has an, an impact to the project, but I, I'm not convinced that we should be making that type of change.
After everything's approved?
Well, uh, essentially to accommodate, uh, plating to the minimum lot sizes to maximize the lots, which was essentially what happened on this project, which wasn't bad in of itself. But, uh, that comes with its own effects of now you have minimum lots. Uh, so our, uh, our recommendation is to recommend denial to the city council of the requested amendments. And I'll leave that motion up for your reference.
Okay. Are there any questions for Director Yost before we invite the applicant up?
That's mine.
Okay. All right, thank you. If the applicant is here and would like to address the commission, you are welcome to do so at this point. Okay. We'll give it twenty seconds in case they call you. All right, seeing no approach to the microphone or other communications, do we have a motion to open the public hearing at this point?
I'll make a motion to open a public hearing.
Moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The public hearing is now open for item number one, is there anyone from the public who would like to address the commission? Please come to the microphone, state your name and, maybe address. Name an address. Sure. Okay, seeing no other attendees willing, wanting to address, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Move to close the public hearing.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So on this particular item, I agree with staff, I see a lot of potential problems with the proposal as far as, I don't think three feet's a good idea anyway, but also sharing space between neighbors, so many problems I can see happening there. I would much rather see that the, the plats were adjusted. How do you guys feel?
I feel the same way.
Same way, as do I.
Okay. Do we need any more discussion or does anybody have a motion?
My motion that we move to recommend the denial of the Lafferty Communities requested amendments to the Westfield Central New Neighborhood Plan to reduce the side setback and adopt standards for side yard reciprocal easements for the cottage lot type.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes and item is denied or recommended of a denial. We don't actually make the final decision. Okay, item number two, Springville Community Development requests amendments to Westfield's Central New Neighborhood Plan to rectify setbacks and other dimensional regulations related to the lot type standards. Again, Director Yost.
Thank you Chair and Commission members. I already showed you the diagram of the regulating plan, so we're on the same page as where we're at, this is the same area, same project. And for the background, similar to what I described in the staff report, when going through and double checking all these standards, it became clear that we had missed some things in, from standard, from lot type to lot type such that in some of them we left like ten feet of depth between the front and rear setbacks to build something or we left a smaller minimum frontage than was required for the minimum frontage, like the house needs to have at least thirty feet of frontage and our setbacks squeezed it more than that at a minimum standard. So these are really all things that should have been caught in drafting and calibration. And with all of the movement that was going on at that time, I did not, I was not diligent enough in making sure that everything was, all the Ts were crossed and the Is were dotted. So I'll just start and go down these lot types and I'll, I'll start by responding to a question that Chair Elingson had about the diagrams. And I'll just switch over here, these diagrams are actually not necessarily to scale. They just show you the location. They just show you the location of where the measurement is taken, but don't reflect the actual dimensions in the table. So while we will have some updates done to these, just to clarify a couple of things, the general diagrams won't change, just the numerical values. So for the house, the corner side yard is coming down from ten feet to eight feet. The side yard from eight to five, which matches the cottage. And the parking and waste from front facade from fifty to forty. What that is, is the measurement from the front of the building, not the front setback, but the front of the building to the first place you can have parking or put your garbage cans. And at fifty, fifty feet, it made a fifteen foot deep garage. So we fix that to calibrate and make that work correctly.
So is it a rear garage?
All, every product type in Westfield Central is rear loaded.
So we're measuring from the back of the house to?
We're measuring from the front of the house, the front face of the house, the front door, to the garage or garbage cans, back into the lot from the front. So it is, let me show you. It is this measurement, so parking and waste from front facade, F, this line from here at the front of the house, back to here to the front of essentially the front side or the interior side of the garage.
Backside of the garage.
Backside of the garage, yeah, I guess, yeah.
So M is more like a breezeway?
M is how wide the building that occupies the space between the minimum rear setback and the garage can be.
It can be a breezeway, it can be a library or small office, whatever you want to make it to be.
But it's, it's a part of the building.
It doesn't, if they choose to employ it, yes, and that's a fifteen foot maximum width for that back wing. It's really a hallway in a room. And it doesn't have to be used, but the garage still has to stay forty feet back from the front of the house. Is that clear? Kind of?
So by moving the parking and waste front facade from fifty to forty, that allows them to have at least a twenty foot garage?
Right. Right, before it was pushing the garage so that it was only fifteen feet away from the back, because if you take your front of fifteen, your parking and waste of fifty, you're now at sixty-five, and your minimum lot depth is eighty. Right.
And that reduces area M by ten feet.
It doesn't actually change area M at all, that's a width.
I mean the distance this way.
It could, yes, yeah. If all that's zero sum, yes, it would make the rear yard or the rear wing smaller. And then to compensate for the change in side yard dimensions, we've decreased the building's side encroachments from six feet to five feet. That's basically how much your like side porches or bay windows or front porches can poke out of that side encroachment, so how far you can poke into your setback with bays or porches. And we've dropped that from six to five, just to moderate that distance a little bit. Any questions on house? On the cottage, we've moved the parking waste measurement from forty feet to twenty-eight feet. Again, because if you do the math, twelve and forty, you end up at fifty-two, and you have thirteen feet of lot left.
That seems like more of a reduction than the previous one.
It is, it is.
Going down by almost.
Twelve feet.
Twelve feet still.
Ten feet.
But the garage was, but they were, the other was fifteen, this was only thirteen. Have you guys had conversations with developer about?
Yes. We had conversations with the, we went through this, we had an online meeting with Tom Lowe, the original designer of the project, with Dave Simpson of Landmark Development and Kayden, his assistant. And I believe we also, we at least reached out to and informed, and I believe on that meeting, we had Tim, that's written in here. Tim Alders, who purchased the project from.
I know they're not here right now, but what were their thoughts on this? Are they supportive?
Yeah, absolutely, it was basically like, Tom spoke to it, basically saying, yes, that's not the right numbers for these lot types. And they were in favor of it because it makes the lots buildable. Because if somebody brought me in a house with a twenty foot garage, I'd have to say, you've got twelve. So, yeah, they were amenable to it. And then on cottage, this is one where we actually will change the diagram. So the arrow for the rear setback in cottage was here, which made it seem like, oh, I actually edited that already. So the arrow used to be right here between the garage and the cottage, and so it made it seem like the setback was from the garage, but the setback's from the rear property line. I already made that change. Any questions on the cottage? On the pair house, which is a fancy name for twin home, or.
It is fancy.
Yeah. I don't know what, pair house, twin home. I guess it takes a lot of living to make a house a home, I guess. So the parking and waste, again, was reduced from thirty-five to twenty-five, again, to provide a buildable depth. So with thirty-five, fifteen, you're at fifty, and you've got sixty-five total depth. And that's the only change on that one. For townhouse park under stacked flat and three townhouses estate, we had an especially kind of comical error. These are units that are intended to actually almost go to their rear lot line. You see a lot of these townhomes in Anthem West or Condy Farms, where they're just alley loaded and the garages in the, under the first floor. So we had a thirty foot rear setback on a
Zero.
On a lot that only has fifty feet of depth. So we didn't leave much, much space. But we've changed it from thirty minimum to less than three or more than twenty. And that is, that is to prevent people from parking in driveways behind their garages and poking out and obstructing the alley. So it either has to be small enough that you really can't park back there, or big enough that you can fit.
How big is the proposed width of the alley?
The alleys are twenty-five.
So if they did twenty feet maximum, then there's forty-five feet between building.
Right, so it's a, less than three or more than twen, equal or more than twenty.
So a person that actually, if it was twenty feet, can, still enough room, they could park behind a garage?
Yes, they could park behind their garage. So it just has to be, no, the between zone is the part where we run into problems. Daybreak had that issue in some of the early villages where people would come with their big trucks and park sideways and be three or four feet out into the alley, and then somebody do it on the other side, then the garbage truck comes and you don't get your garbage picked up that week.
Do you have the diagram for this one?
Yes. So there's the townhouse park under.
And where's the part where we're talking about less than three or more than twenty?
Here, E.
So the gray area there is your driveway?
Correct.
Okay.
I know there's a, so did they correct them up there in in Daybreak?
Yeah, they tightened them up or widened them out.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
It's interesting, I know there's some townhomes over in Spanish Fork, and if you parked like my truck in the driveway, it's hanging three feet into the road.
Yeah. I mean, I know at least in East Lake Village, it was an issue, I just haven't heard that it's been an issue since East Lake Village.
So we're talking about the distance between the back of the house and the beginning of the driveway?
And the property line. Depending on how they design the alleys, there may be some landscape area outside of the actual paved width of the alley, because the alleys are wider than the paved width. So you might probably have twenty feet of width in the alley, then you'll have another two and a half feet between the edge of the pavement and the property line on both sides of the alley.
So could it be designed so that the edge of the home is at sidewalk? And you don't have a driveway?
Is it property line? Yes, so it's either less than three.
That's what we mean by less than three?
Yes.
You're at a sidewalk, you're just pulling to.
You're just turning from the alley right into the garage. Yes, so less than three or more than equal or twenty.
Right. Is that an issue if we don't have parking?
Well, they all have, they're all parked on site. So they have two stalls either in the building or on surface, but nobody's proposing to not have a garage.
Well, I mean, what do you do about visitor parking?
The nice thing about, and I can pull it up, the nice thing about this project is when you have.
There's parking around that civic area.
Yeah, when you have.
What is that from this zone?
Let me, so we're Westfield Central.
I know, but you can always need the exercise to get where you're headed.
And.
When a ninety year old grandma comes to visit.
Am I, stamp plans?
Not that I have an idea.
So this is the, no, I don't want it open there.
Or somebody who has a handicap.
When the plat is, so this is the plat, and it's probably actually more instructive to show you this other sheet. This one's clean. So this, these are some park under townhomes here. So this is your lane, this is the actual edge of pavement of the lane, and then you have a little gap. But you have on-street parking almost continuously because you don't have any driveways. So instead of sacrificing fifteen to twenty feet of curb in front of every house for driveway, you have continuous on-street parking, except where we made a compromise with Public Works to not let people park on these corners in exchange for them letting us have a tighter ADI.
How wide is that road?
Standard, standard residential local.
So someone parks on either side, we have one vehicle width in between?
No, you, it's thirty, at twenty-nine feet of asphalt, so just like all the other residential locals in the Westfields.
Which are narrow.
Yes. Which we like.
I don't.
Staff likes. So how often do you run into people out there? Yeah, this is the front.
It happens in our neighborhood. Okay, so they can park along the front of the?
Yeah, they can park along the front of the house. They just don't have, they have two off-street parking stalls and then free game for on-street parking, and then they have.
They choose to have shorter condos and they can park along the garage.
Yes. Yeah. But with all of these being plotted to the minimums, I, I don't think that's gonna happen. Unless you essentially just end up with a ten foot first floor room, which may happen in some of these actually. But we'll see. Okay. So that was the the townhouse, and that's the same thing in the stacked flat, which is like a multi-story condo building where there's one unit per floor, essentially.
On those, they're just ones, one parking garage, one space.
There's always two off-street parking spaces per unit.
So I forget how high those stacked flats.
These can go to three stories or.
So is the parking then all underneath?
Sometimes you, they'll plat them deeper and have garages behind them, kind of detached garages you park into sideways, where these are all kind of platted again, platted to minimums. It will most likely be that a bunch of the first floor is eaten up with parking, except for maybe like a, some type of room for one of the units.
So all three units will share the same parking area, but they'll have a designated spot?
Typically, in this type of product, they are private garages. But they can be surface parked, but I haven't seen anyone proposing to surface park these. My house was built without a garage in ninety, but I haven't seen any houses built without garages for quite a long time. And our code actually requires some off-street covered space, but that's not something that, and that probably applies to this code because it doesn't mention it, so it's not, doesn't supersede the standard parking requirements. So generally, they would need to be for single family attached and detached, provide that covered parking.
And covered parking could be a carport.
Could.
There is one house in my neighborhood that's a carport.
It could be a carport. I'd like a carport. Or my wife would like a carport, I guess.
Better than nothing.
My mom got her one of those windshield things that straps around your side view mirrors, that's good enough.
Yay.
We also moved the parking waste from thirty to twelve for the same purpose as the other lot types, because you just run out of room on a fifty foot deep lot. Any questions on those? And that's the three townhouses estate that it also applies to. For the lots, the lots are basically the potentially zero lot line, tall, narrow units. And I guess I should actually mention that too. On all of these, we've changed front corner to side corner, just to better match our nomenclature, so we don't get confused. On this one, what we did is we actually changed the parking waste from front facade from twenty feet, which would leave you no place to park, because the ground floor is basically your garage. And, you know, a landing and stairs and perhaps a closet to, that it has to be screened if it, if for some reason there's a lot big enough that you could do it on the surface, it needs to be screened from the front. And if it's in a garage, it needs to be screened so that it's not visible from the front door. And most of these, people are designing them so the front door and the garage door are not on the same side of the unit.
So are these intended to be row houses?
They can be attached or detached, as you see them here in this diagram, in this kind of oblique from Daybreak. Some of them are detached, some of them are attached. It really depends on how they line up in, on the lots. And the one set of plans I've seen from these, actually from Lafferty, has some that are pairs, some that are threes, and some that are actually individual, just based on how the lots layout.
Is it possible for them to all be completely together, not just in a row, but more like an apartment building? To our front back, front back, and sides?
No, because they, well, for one, the the plat doesn't have any of those. So if I zoom out here, the, these are lots here, here, and here. And then these are lots here. So, yeah, actually, you do have some that would be
Detached.
That could be together, but the, the plan they're showing, none of the plans I've seen do that, because they provide a little bit, like on this lot standard, they do provide a little space between them so that they have light and windows on at least three sides of the unit.
Okay.
Right. Exactly. And they're often designed, again, with closed sides and open sides, so they try to arrange the windows, so one building has, you know, doesn't look right into the next one, if they're sensitive on the design. But these are, in this central block are back to back. And then there was also a provision in that lot standard for encroachments, and because these, this building can go to the property lines, there's no need to have encroachments, because we're not gonna let them build beyond their property lines. And this is actually, I, I just figured out how to answer your question. Chair Elingson, the building frontage at your setback is ninety feet max, so you can't actually occupy more than ninety feet of any of your frontage. I mean ninety percent, sorry, not ninety feet. It's an Arlen fifteen lot. Ninety percent of your frontage, so you could occupy ninety percent of this, or ninety percent there, ninety percent there, ninety percent there, but if you took this and went back here, you'd start maybe pushing the ninety percent, so it does provide a little spacing, because you gotta leave a little bit of. uh, maybe pushing the ninety percent, so it does provide a little spacing, because you gotta leave a little bit of uh, gap between your sides on, between your setbacks, or, and the adjacent, the perpendicular setback on all of them, so you couldn't take this all the way to the back and then saw it into another one. And then we took the side encroachments off as well. And that is the, uh, the extent of those. Are there any specific questions on any of those individual members, uh, numbers? It's a lot.
I just think you're cleaning it up.
Uh, the other thing that I was starting to mention on the first item that I haven't mentioned yet on this is that back in December, when this project came back to you for amendments in response to concerns from the neighborhood, I, the version of this plan that I worked from in making this amendment to take this road out and take, get rid of the units on this block, left off this specific provision that was requested by the council after it went to the council from this body. The council requested that the maximum lot hop height for all lot tops across the whole project be limited to thirty-five feet. And, uh, Lafferty and I think others may uh, struggle with that, and they've indicated that to me, that it's really hard to build three and a half stories in thirty-five feet. Uh, which, and the kind of roof deck half top floor mezzanine prod, product is very, very popular and very attractive. Uh, but that was something that came in right at the end, so that thirty-five feet doesn't necessarily always jive with the height listed in floors, but that was something council asked to do, and we actually did it in the meeting where it was adopted, but I didn't perpetuate that through into the revision, so we caught that, and because the version without that was actually in front of you and in front of the, uh, city council when it was last adopted, we felt that it was important to employ the same legislative process to put it, make sure we put it back right.
So it was or was not approved in that form?
Uh, it was originally approved with the maximum height of thirty-five, approved with the maximum height of thirty-five feet, but when we amended it in December, the, it, the document I used to make the edits from wasn't the one, wasn't the version we had changed in the meeting, because we had changed it right at the last minute, and I went back to the version that we took to the meeting, and so then that didn't show up. So when I went back, when we saw some proposals and they were quite tall, and I thought to myself, I know there's something, and we looked around, listened to the meetings, and then pointed back to the one that's adopted in September that actually has that on it.
What height are they looking for in order to do the three and a half stories?
Uh, I don't know what the maximum foot height would be, but if, you know, there are ten-foot plates, if you, you know, if you go a foot between floors, then it's probably in the realm of, uh.
But the city council already approved the thirty-five, right?
Yes, the city council.
All this is just.
Putting it back, because when we took it back to amend.
I think we're good.
Yeah, in front of them in December, it wasn't there.
Right.
So technically, they adopted what was in front of them, but we didn't catch it, so we're just fixing it.
They can get three stories, but they're not gonna get that half.
A half story, that would be.
Story that they want, they need another five feet.
Yeah.
Or three to five feet.
Yeah.
Thanks for that clarification.
You're welcome. So we feel, again, that it, uh, restores or retains the original intent, especially where we didn't perpetuate the edit, and ensures that functional and livable units can fit on each lot type like they're supposed to, and that the alley's function is intended based on the rear setbacks. So each lot's calibrated now, which means it's tuned up right for what's supposed to be built on it, and the errors that we perpetuated in the last amendment have been fixed, and our recommendation is that, uh, you recommend approval to the council.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, thank you. If the applicant is here, this is a portion of the meeting where the applicant would be invited to address the commission. So do you wanna come back as the applicant? Okay, then we'll skip that portion. Okay, I'm, I'm glad to see that there is agreement between staff. Do we have a motion to open the public hearing?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All, and aye. Um, is there anybody here from the public who would like to address this item, item number two? Uh, seeing none, do we have a motion to close?
We need to close the public hearing.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is now closed. Uh, discussion or questions from the commissioners?
I think it's pretty straightforward. I think we're just cleaning things up.
Okay. Do we have a motion then?
I'll move to recommend approval of the Springville Community Development Development's request amendment to the Westfield Central new neighborhood plan.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item number three is also from Springville Community Development requesting an amendment to eleven dash four dash four oh six height of buildings to increase the height of accessory uses from uses from fifteen feet to seventeen point five feet in the R one dash ten and R one dash eight zones, and Director Yost.
Thank you. This one's pretty simple. It's a single edit to a single measurement, unlike multiples in the last one. Uh, this was re, uh, requested by council members Nelson and Jensen.
And I recommend we not do it.
That's easy.
I'm kidding.
Uh, to add two and a half feet to the maximum height of accessory uses in those zones to accommodate taller recreational vehicles and similar, similar vehicles that uh, have trouble fitting in them at a fifteen-foot height. This is our current, uh, table in terms of height, so in the R one fifteen, you can go to twenty-five, and that drops down ten feet. So this essentially gives us an additional increment between the R one fifteen and the R one five uh, that allows us a slightly taller building on these, on larger lots.
To go from the fifteen to the seventeen and a half?
Correct.
Why not just to eighteen?
Because seventeen and a half was the, uh, request, and I, I'd rather give the minimum in height in terms of accessory buildings than take the lid off too much.
It just seems odd, everything else is in a whole number increment, and then we have a half, and it's a difference of six inches. To me, it just makes sense to have it be a whole number.
Yeah, I, I think, I mean, that is great to include in a motion, in a substitute mo, yeah. I'll, I'll have a problem with that.
I do agree, I, I mean, with you, I don't really like seeing things go any higher. I know it's a six-inch difference. But, uh, but I don't like, personally, I don't like seeing this go, get too high on it.
I would say if I was six inches taller, it'd make a lot of difference for me.
In some cases, six inches is huge. In this particular instance, I don't, I don't think that you'd be able to visually tell the difference walking past between a seventeen and a half and an eighteen.
You just need to get a colossal tower on your ski boat.
Yeah.
Have to go up higher.
Your wake tower. Uh, so I, I think it would have minimal visual impact, uh, and it would facilitate the, moving vehicles into enclosed buildings that currently aren't, and I think it's a positive, uh, aesthetic improvement to be able to put those type of vehicles.
I just have one question, going back to the eighteen-foot height. I mean, garage doors and things, would it be easier just to be at eighteen feet instead of seventeen and a half? Do we create an issue there?
What's it add in a regular house? When you have a garage that's got a higher, is there a limit on that?
Fourteen foot, I mean, there's some garages that are fourteen feet, some are twelve, some are.
No, I mean for the ones where somebody puts their RV in.
Well, it's subject, if it's part of the house, it's subject to the house, which is thirty to mid gable.
This is more like a detached, instead of.
This is for a, yes, this is for a detached accessory structure, so it has to be at least six feet away from the front.
I think incrementally, it'd be easier to go to the eighteen. That's just me. I don't care.
Yeah, and, and while that's not noted in the recommendation.
But I mean, it just makes it easier just to go to eighteen.
That's super easy. All you have to do is make, say that in the motion, and we're there.
Okay.
I mean, obviously, the council has to act, but it's easy for you to make that recommendation.
Any other questions or feedback or? Or, okay.
Thank you.
Uh, would you like to utilize your ability to also be the applicant?
No.
Okay. Then we move to the public hearing. Do we have a motion for a public hearing?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is now open. If anyone from the public would like to address item number three, please come to the microphone. We haven't taken a motion yet. We will take comment before we vote on anything.
What we did, Ron, was say, why are we doing seventeen and a half? Why don't we just do eighteen? That's what our discussion was.
Okay.
Can you state your name for the record and your address, please?
I'm Ron Lowell. Uh, lived here all my life. I've been trying to put a building up since February with this fifteen-foot mid gable. Uh, forty years ago, ten-foot doors would facilitate the trailers, the Dalton's, the Terry's, you know, the Prowlers, and the first fifth wheels come out, and they needed a twelve-foot door. Well, now all our younger people, they can't go camping in anything than, less than a forty-foot fifth wheel. They cannot put them in a twelve-foot, they just barely get in a fourteen-foot. I have met with over a week with Clary Building and spent ten, well, thousands of extra dollars with scissor trusses to meet your fifteen-foot. I met it on the right side. I don't need an extra building on the left, so they rejected me there, but we need to come up to date. I've done a little research in the last couple of weeks. I've been from Mapleton to Santaquin. Uh, Spanish Fork starts out at twenty-foot at the peak. My building is twenty-foot, one-half inch, but I had to drop to a three-twelve pitch. One of these years, we're gonna have a winter like we used to have, and I'd like a four-twelve, but I'll live with a three-twelve. Salem is twenty-five foot at the peak. Payson is eighteen feet at mid gable. Santaquin is twenty-four at the peak. Mapleton, I think, is a little out of hand. They're forty-foot at peak. So, uh, well, we're getting so many of these big fifth wheels are being parked out on the street. I've talked to a couple of different people that's got room in their backyards, and they've been denied because you can't put a fourteen-foot. With my building, even with the scissor trusses, the best we can do is thirteen-six on the center doors and eleven-six on the two outside doors. I would hope the city would maybe come up to date and help some of these people get stuff off the road and come up to date with what they're driving now, and that's kind of where I'm at on it. I hope you consider it, but I, I've done my best. I say, we've designed a building that meets your criteria on the right side, and but I say I've spent some extra money in engineering and everything to do it, but I would have liked a little higher door, but I, you just can't get it. There's just no way. And these big new fifth wheels, fourteen-foot, and you better not have a cat on top, because it'll scrape them off, so, I mean, it just, that's where it is. So, appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public who would like to address the commission? Okay. Do we have a motion for the public hearing?
Speak motion.
Go, go ahead.
Yes.
A motion, we close the public hearing.
Okay.
Second.
Tie for second, this time we'll go with the left. So Commissioner Nelson can have that one. You were open for a motion tonight. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Public hearing is now closed. Do we have any discussion on item number three or questions or a motion?
I don't have anything. Mike?
I'm good.
I move that we add three feet to the maximum height of accessory uses in the R one dash ten and R one dash eight zones to accommodate accessory use structures capable of housing tall recreational vehicles and similar vehicles.
Second.
Did you include the R?
Yeah, you didn't include the amendment.
I said R one dash ten and R one dash eight. Do I need anything?
Do we need to have, do we need to have the, which, which piece is being amended, eleven dash four dash four oh six? Okay, I'll second then.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, and that concludes the business on our agenda. Do we have anything from staff before we adjourn? Okay, our next meeting is scheduled for the end of the month. Right.
Actually, that does bring up something, um, uh, if, if we're able to, uh, based on applications, we're actually looking to, uh, cancel that meeting, as that will be the first kind of stakeholder uh, general information meeting about our Main Street, our downtown Main Street plan, uh, which we're calling reframing downtown. Hopefully, you may have seen some collateral floating around at our city days, but the nine survey responses we have so far tell me you probably haven't. But we're working on advertising that and just getting underway, and as members of the planning commission, you're kind of key stakeholders in the process, so we'd really like to be able to cancel our planning commission meeting and facilitate, uh, attendance at that meeting, which we're gonna notice is a public meeting so that anyone, uh, any number of you or council members that would like to attend can attend.
Okay.
It'll be a general, uh, kind of introductory, uh, presentation, and then, uh, break into groups for Main Street walking tours with our, uh, facilitators from our consultant team.
Sounds intriguing.
Yeah, uh, we're really excited. We feel like, uh, our consultant team is great, uh, they're prepared and, uh, have a lot of experience in this, and they're excited to come out and uh, keep going, and we're excited to get started.
Twenty-eight.
Correct.
Probably about the same time, about seven.
Uh, six, seven, somewhere in there. I don't remember the exact time, but it was that night, and we'll get information out to you in the next day or two.
Okay. And then our July meetings are the twelfth and the twenty-sixth. Uh, do we have any conflicts with the twenty-sixth being the day after a holiday as far as attendance?
I probably won't be here.
You won't be here? Okay. Are you? You can come? Okay, and I'll be here since at least three of us so far.
And hopefully, we'll have a seventh member by then.
Okay. Do we have applicants for that?
I, I have not heard any updates on that.
Okay. All right. Do we need to make a motion for the meeting on the twenty-eighth to adjust the calendar?
No, we'll just post, uh, uh, cancellation.
That works. Okay. Thanks. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn the meeting.
All right, second? All seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.